Everybody please rise for. John, roll call please.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Zinski.
Here.
Here.
Wes Biscito, Mr. Emma.
Here.
Okay, Carl, could you mention about the one application that we have tonight? Oh, okay. Notice of the meeting had been satisfied in accordance with chapter 231 PL 1975 by advertising in the Home News Tribune notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, posting on the bulletin board and filing with the Barrow Clerk.
Carl.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications being adjourned. The first one, which we've been adjourning is case 21-23, Muffy Lopez at 1094 Boardentown Avenue. As you may recall, she has some improvements on the property that are built into the JCP and L power lines and they're, they're working out what JCP and L was allowed to stay, what has to go, and then they'll come to the board. So that we're going to adjourn to next month, to July 27th, with no further notice. The second case that is being adjourned is case number 22-07, Julian and Wanda Diaz Lopez, which we all know as Priscilla Jewelry at 322 Washington Road, because we have a dearth of members tonight. That's a use variance that needs five affirmative votes. The applicant has asked that we carry that to next month with no further notice, which we always do, unless there's an objection. The board will continue that to July 27th with no further notice.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to start with case 2212, Chase Buscemi, 20 Ridge Avenue. Please come up.
Good evening, Chase. I just need to swear again. Please raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just speak up a little because the microphone has to pick you up.
Okay.
And just give us your names.
Can you hear me now?
Hello? Hello?
Hardest part of the meeting, get the microphone to work. It's easy from here.
Hello?
There you go. So Chase, can you just give us your lane, name and spell your last name?
First name Chase, last name Buscemi, B U S C E M I.
Thank you. And just explain to the board what you're doing at your property.
I'm a corner property and my, there's a fence that's, I think it's a 10-foot setback from my property line, and I'd like to have a zero setback. And because of it slopes down, it requires a three to four foot retaining wall along the property line.
And just for the board, there's two variances. As Chase indicated, there's one is that the fence is not 10 foot back from the property line, and the other is because he's putting the fence on top of a retaining wall. So the way our ordinance is written, you include the height of the retaining wall plus the fence to get to the maximum fence height. So that's why he's requiring a variance for the fence height. It would be about nine feet or six is, is the maximum required.
Thank you. Now, the fence, are you going to put the, you have a retaining wall in the back now?
No, no retaining wall. There's, there's, there's a fence and that, that also is 12 foot back from my property line, but that's a huge slope that goes down to the next property. And there's privacy trees there. So, I mean, it'll be too much work and too expensive to do that. So.
Okay. Now, I was just curious if that wall was back there, you were going to put a fence on top of that wall or?
No, there's no wall back there. Just on the side. I have printed out pictures if you guys want to see. I don't know.
That's fine. And so it's just going to be on the side of your house that you're going to put the retaining wall on the fence?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm asking, like, like I said, it's setback 10 feet from my property line. I'd like to go on my property line. I mean, if I could go further, that'd be great. And I only asked that because when I spoke to the zoning, they said usually on a corner property, that situation arises when you're 10 feet away from the sidewalk. I actually have 40 feet to the sidewalk from, from the property line. Yeah.
I see. Okay. Members, have any, any questions at all? Tom, anybody? Jay, is any issue, I guess, being the corner property with the fence or anything like that?
Mr. Chairman, yes, the site triangle is an issue. And just let me clarify, your survey shows you have 20.94 or 84 feet from your corner of your house to the property line. You just said you had 40 feet?
20, where from the house to the, to the property line is 20 feet?
That's what the survey says, yeah.
Yeah. But so right now from the house, the fence is 10 feet, and then my property line is another 10 feet. And then from that point to the property line, the sidewalk is 40 feet.
I'm not sure why it would be 40 feet if you're on a corner lot.
It was redone. I mean, that, that, I don't know if that's a current one, the one they gave me was like from the 70s.
Is anything shown on those pictures?
Yeah, the whole.
Yeah, we'll have to mark this.
Jay, this road. wider road, is that a paper street or a real street?
Full and wider was vacated when this development, this property was owned by the Cook, the family, and they had a subdivision and they extended Ridge Road. So full and wider was a paper street that was vacated. And that means it was, the rights went away and they rededicated the right of way. So that's maybe why it's farther away, but.
So I'm looking at a tax map. The tax map shows this gentleman's property going right to Ridge, Ridge. He wants to put it on the other.
So just real quickly, so the applicant has given me, I marked him A1 through A6, six printout photos of the property, and that's the street we're looking at. That's Fuller?
Ridge.
Ridge, okay. So Ridge Avenue and a couple of the photos have some lines and distances drawn. And Jake, I probably want to have you look at that first, because that explains how he's calculated.
So, so Ridge is your front yard?
Ridge is the whole corner. They changed, it's not that name anymore.
But it is the front, your front.
Well, what I want to do is the side.
I know, but you're, the front of your house is Ridge.
Yes, yes.
One faces Ridge and.
And on the side is the street that went away.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what side, what side are you looking to put this on? If I'm looking at the front of your house, your driveway is on the left.
The right side.
Along the side street.
For anybody who's looking at pictures, is it, is it fair to say the chain link fence you got now, you want to move that further out about 10 more feet?
Yeah, 10 feet would be my property line. If I could go further, that'd be great.
Why would you go further if that's your property?
I don't, is, am I responsible for the rest of that property?
Okay.
I, I only had, like I said, I only asked that because when I asked the zoning manager, they said, usually, you know, the property line is 10, 10 feet away from the sidewalk. And as you could say, I have more than 10 feet from the sidewalk, even from my property line. There's like 40 feet to the sidewalk.
So theoretically, you're going to put this fence, it's going to be like in the middle of that yard?
Like, can you see with, I don't know if you see the stump?
You see the stump on the right side of the house?
Right, yeah, yeah. So right next to that stump is my property line.
And this is what the fence will look like when you're done?
Yes.
Take a look.
Find the order.
There's still going to be 40 foot from.
Yes.
Fence to, to the street.
The street.
Yes, but the, the board engineer was looking at the tax maps and stuff. It's unclear who actually owns that strip that's beyond your property line. Sometimes it's part of the right of way for the road. They just didn't make it into a street. It looks like it could even be your neighbor's property. So it's unclear. So we really can't let you build the, the retaining wall fence beyond your property line. So.
I don't have a neighbor next.
It's like his property is like an L shape. So it kind of comes along with yours. But in any event, if that's correct or not, not sure if it's part of the right of way for the street, you know, we can't give you authorization to put the fence there. Understand the reason why you want it.
Past the property line is what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm going to put it on.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, you know.
And you haven't had any, because you sent your notice, you didn't, new neighbors called you or talked about this?
I spoke to everyone. They said, you know, that'd be great. It'll look great. I got all the signatures.
Yeah, no, you got everything in line. Because when we're done discussing this, we will open it up to the public. If anyone's here, they'll, they'll come up. I'm just curious if any neighbors had reached out to you.
So you need to build a, you're going to build a retaining wall and then put the fence on top of it?
Correct.
Right. And that's what creates the variance because.
And why not just the fence?
There's a slope there.
You want to even it out?
I want, I wanted the same elevation as my current backyard.
So you're going to regrade and fill in?
Yes.
Okay. Jays, are still an issue for the line of sight there?
It appears that the road is far enough away with the setback that he would be okay. Your fence is going to the, where the front of your house is, where the existing fence is?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not coming in?
The, the turn in where the gate would be, yes.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, it appears that it's not going to be any further encroachment than the houses at this point.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
And Mr. Chairman, so the, the applicant wants to move the fence a little bit further. And, and it seems like there's a question as to who owns that property.
He's leaving it on his property.
No, I know, but if he actually owns the property, then he would have the right to move it to where he wants.
Let me just, but his survey doesn't show that he owns it. His survey, but along with what he's saying.
Survey.
But I, I have a copy of a filed map for that development that shows that the resident behind him actually owns.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
It's not reflected on the tax map, but the file map shows it that way. So it doesn't appear that this gentleman owns that strip.
Yeah, I just wanted to, in case he did own it, give him the opportunity.
How could I find?
Well, no, he actually found out. I think he found out.
Well, you'd need to get a surveyor to, to look through the.
Yeah, this survey is old, but I got the same thing. It's a tax map. It looks like it's from 89.
Yeah, you would need to have a surveyor go get the, the recorded deeds for that whole neighborhood, or at least around your property, and then figure it out from there. Because as Jay's saying, the, a recorded map, which is almost like a deed in the county records, shows that it's an L shape, as I was explaining before, the tax map, which don't respect to the town, they're not always correct. The tax map shows it cutting off the way the survey you gave us, the old survey is, you know, it's, it's up where you have the, the proposed retaining wall. So.
So Jay, you're pretty certain that he doesn't own the land?
According to both, the tax record and the file.
Neighbor wanted to sell you that strip of property?
Well, my neighbor did tell me the other day, actually, that that might have been given to the prior homeowner. So, I mean, I, he was just mentioning it to me. So, you know, that's why I'm bringing it up. I mean.
Are you allowed to do that?
Yeah, you can. Sure. You can give people property anytime you want. You want to give me property, I'll take it.
No, I was turned down. That's why, before I was on the zoning board.
Yeah.
They wanted to give me a little piece. I wanted to give my neighbor a little piece to give him some room. And the zoning board said, no, not allowed. If you put yourself in jeopardy, I forget the term they used, but.
Yeah, so, so what you would need to do is, is get in touch with a, or surveyor who can do the research on the, on the deeds and get you a new survey.
The other thing you could do is just talk to the neighbor behind you and maybe get a copy of his survey. Because if this survey shows that.
I mean, there's the clear distinction between where he ends and I begin. I don't know if that's something you're looking at that's old, because there is no, nothing that connects me to another neighbor on that side.
Yeah. Yeah, show them the, so he understands what we're saying.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I would leave it to the applicant to see if he wants to pursue this, and maybe we can delay. No, delay it?
Well, I, I would think if we think our map's correct, I would imagine we can go forward with the application. And if he finds out later that it's his property, he can come back and refile.
Let's see if he wants to.
Okay.
Part of it. Because if he wants to pursue it, it's not worth giving him an approval tonight. He's not going to do anything. Have to build it and then come back.
Okay.
Move it.
Carl, if, if he wants to pursue that, it's better to, to let him.
Give him time.
Continue it. Okay. It's up to him.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, so where we are now, if you wanted to adjourn the application and try and figure out if you own that piece, so you're saying what you heard was correct, that the neighbor gave that piece of property to the person who owned it before you, and get a new survey and come back, then that's a whole different ballgame.
Is it possible that I could, I mean, what would be the decision on just putting it on my property line?
So that's the other alternative, which is we could go forward tonight and approve it on the property line where you propose it. Okay. If it turns out, if you want to go research it after that, go ahead, you'd have to, and if it turns out you own that piece, okay, you'd have to file a new application. There's a new application fee and all that. That's why I was saying.
The same process that I did.
We go through all this all over again as if it was new.
Or you can delay a month or two.
Or we could delay it and you can go check it out and come back. That we knew new application fees. You don't have to do the notice in the newspaper all over again and all that stuff. We were just adjourned, like we did the first two ones at the beginning of the night, and just come back in July and tell us what's what, and we can go from there.
So it's.
You want to do that?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So why don't, actually, if I would just make, is anybody in the audience who's here on this application? Okay, we don't see anybody. That's usually the chairman's job. Sorry, Bill. But I just wanted to make sure. So I have to, I'll put this on the record. Legally, I have to tell everybody, anyone who's here on this application tonight, it is being adjourned. It's not being heard. The application is being adjourned to July 27th, and no further notice is required by the applicant in the newspaper to people in 200 feet. So there are legal stuffs on the record. So again, come back next month. If it turns out you need more time, we'll continue again August, whatever you may need. If you have an answer, good. If you have, if you find out that it's correct, you can get the survey in time into Joan. She'll circulate it to us. We'll be ready to hear it next month. If you have the information, but you don't have the survey ready, come back July. Tell us what's up. We'll deal with it all again in July.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
No, thanks, Chase. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Take care. Thanks. Take care. All right, application 2213 Patel, 17 Sherwood Road.
I'll scan. Sorry, sir.
Good evening. I'm Paul Zarno, the applicant's attorney. We have Mr. Harish Patel and Ms. Sigal Patel, who are both with us today. And we also have our expert, which is Corey Fernandez, architect. And this is a fairly simple matter. It is a one bulk variance requested for what's going to be a brand new house. His, his plan is to tear down the existing structure. And I'm sorry, I'm, my office is at 451, not, that's my house. My office is at 207 Washington Road, New Jersey. The, the applications for one bulk variance for the lot coverage, because the proposed 25% for the building that is his dream home and the, and the coverage allowed is 20. We can have you hear from the applicant himself as to his reasoning for why he would like to have this house and why he actually needs this house. And also from our expert, who will show you what it's going to look like when it's, he has drawings.
Sounds good.
Okay. Mr. Patel.
Good evening, Mr. Patel. You just swear again, swear? You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please give us your names, spell your last name.
My name is Harris Patel. Last name is P A T F.
You're just a little closer to the microphone.
My name is Harris Patel. Okay, I wanted to build my house because it's a single family house and me, my wife, my two kids, my mother-in-law and my father-in-law, they live with us. The kids, my daughter is seven years, my son is 13. So now they need a separate bedrooms and like that. So I don't like to move anywhere because I'm living, serving last 16 years. I love my neighborhood. I love this town. So I figure out that we build the house in the same place. So that's the reason we wanted to come here.
Real quickly, how many people will be living there?
Six.
Six. Thank you.
Continue. Okay. So basically, now we would like to hear from our architect, who is Corey Fernandez. We'll show you how we came to require the one bulk variance we're seeking.
Mr. Fernandez, raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And do you want to qualify him?
Yes. Mr. Fernandez, you are an architect?
Correct.
And what is your training?
I'm a registered architect in New Jersey, New York. I'm the owner of the company, Total Architecture. We've been in business since 2016, and I have an extensive pass with residential construction.
Have you any academic qualifications?
I do. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from NJIT.
Okay.
Have you presented in front of other zoning boards at all or?
I have. Recently Summit, Fanwood, and Pennington.
And in those places, were you accepted as an expert?
I was.
Except you as an expert. Thank you.
Thank you. So just one correction, the bulk variance is for building coverage, not lot coverage. So this is the, the single family dwelling that we're proposing for my client, Mr. Patel. So the object here was to meet his requirements for six bedrooms within the existing lot. So.
Excuse me one second. What, what's, it says building lot coverage. Is it building coverage or lot coverage? What is the variance we actually have?
There's, yeah, it's for building coverage.
Separate standard, building coverage is the amount of the property. It's actually got a building on it. And then the lot coverage, first impervious coverage, that includes your pavement. I'm not on here, sorry. The driveway, patio pavers, things like that, all of that, plus the building. So the, you know, anything that's covered, that's not grass, that's not landscaping on the property, goes into that impervious coverage or lot coverage, catch-all bucket. And then anything that's covered by the building is a smaller number goes into the building coverage bucket. And we're talking about building coverage here.
Right. And we actually, we missed the.
Why does it say building lot coverage?
Well, it's the amount of lot that's covered by buildings.
Okay.
It's a confusing term. No, no, just.
By the building itself. And then there's a separate standard that's the amount of lot that's covered by impervious surface and includes the building plus all your other driveways, patios, anything else hard that's not grass and.
So has, has this application brought that from 20% to 25%?
I'm not sure what the existing conditions are at the, at the moment, but the standard, the requirement is a maximum of 20%, and they're seeking 25%.
And again, it's just for the building, the house itself, not all the other impervious. The term is confusing. So it's just the building, just the house is where it's over. So if you take, there's a separate standard for impervious coverage, which is okay.
That we meet the other standard. We don't meet those.
It's just this, it's just basically the, the amount of ground like the house itself covers is the issue.
Just to clarify, the existing house is 22.2%. So the existing house is 2.2% over. He's now going to 24.9%. So he's increasing it 2.7 above what's there now, but it's 4.9 above what the ordinance allows.
All the brick and concrete that's around it that they propose is okay.
That's 44.4. He's allowed 45%. So that's okay. He doesn't need a variance for that. It's just the coverage for the house.
Thanks. That's, that makes it clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the existing house is a little bit over 22%. So the existing is not in form and condition, but the plan is to completely knock down that house and, and construct a new house. So this is the proposed house. It's a two-story with a two-car garage, six bedrooms, if you include the one that is in the basement.
Just to clarify, these are the drawings that you submitted for the application?
So I'm presenting the exact same drawings that were submitted for the application.
I mean, I happen to notice yours is colored, but we're not going to bother with that. It's the same, same thing.
17 copies in color was just.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Please continue.
This second sheet is the variance plan. It just outlines the 200-foot radius of the lot owners within the 200 feet. This is the proposed site plan. So it's showing the existing dwelling to be demolished, the existing coverage and the proposed coverage, both impervious and building, the calculations for each one of those coverage requirements. And this plan also, also represents the, the final grades. There will be some grading done. There's also a dry well being proposed to mitigate stormwater. And then patio in the back, proposed paper driveway with a fountain area.
What was it again?
The dry well is an underground tank, which slows the rate of water transmission that outflows into the sewer system.
Rainwater, basically.
Rainwater. Yeah, it's, it takes stormwater off the roof of the dwelling and, and slows the rate.
That's proposed in the plan.
That's proposed as part of the site plan. Correct.
All right, good.
This is the soil erosion and sediment control plan. So how the soil will be managed during construction. It also has the details for the dry well. And yeah, the siltation fence to manage the soil and also the tracking pad is on here as well. So this is the basement plan. The idea here is it'll be mostly finished basement, unex- unexcavated portion of where the garage is and the utility area. The goal is for an eight-foot-six finished ceiling height in the basement. This is the first floor plan, a two-car garage, foyer, living room, dining room, family room. There's a guest room and a kitchen off of the back. There's also a powder room in the back. This is in large plan that shows that the outdoor patio that is off of the back of the house, off of the kitchen. This is the second floor plan. There is four bedrooms. One is a master suite. Every bedroom has a bathroom, and then there's also an area that's open to below, which is the family room and the foyer below. This is the roof plan. And these are the elevations. This is the front elevation that faces Sherwood Road. I think we, we really want to complement the neighborhood and really put a lot of design effort into making this an aesthetically pleasing building with a lot of scaled down elements. So it's not oversized for the neighborhood. The back of the house, the front will be brick facade and stucco. And these are the, the two sides of the houses, which will be clavering, clavering siding, cement board, clavering siding.
Hardy board?
Yeah, hardy board. Yep. So that's an overview of the project, and we welcome any questions from the board.
Is there any other witnesses you're going to present or?
No. Just the applicant and architect.
Now, how much taller will this home be as compared to its surrounding homes?
I'd have to take a closer look at this. This, this building's about 34.5 feet. I think the existing homes, there's a lot of split levels and bi-levels with low pitched roofs. So I'd say they're probably anywhere from 23 to 30 feet, most of the houses in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, let me ask you, what's the reasoning behind needing the extra 5%?
So we started the design process with a house that was within the required footprint. It was not meeting Mr. Patel's requirements for the six bedrooms for the extended family.
Wouldn't you make those bedrooms smaller? Wouldn't you make those bedrooms smaller?
Yes, but it was not meeting the requirements that we were shooting for with a certain size bedroom.
Thank you. And, and there's seven bathrooms in this home too? Six bathrooms, one half bath?
Six and a half.
How, you have the bedrooms here. How, how large are those bedrooms? Are they?
The average bedroom here is, this is 14 by 12 and a half, 14 by 16, 19 eight by 16 eight, and then the masters 20 by 20.
And there's no way you could make this smaller to not require the variance? It's because this seems like a very large house in a neighborhood that is, you know, the character is a much smaller profile, much smaller homes. And I was just curious to see if that could be reduced anyway.
We started with a smaller home and it was not me in all the requirements that we started with the project.
What's driving you? What's driving, what's, what's driving that 5% that you needed that? Where, where's that footprint?
I, I, you know, it came from the six bedrooms and also the open concept. So even though it's a bigger footprint, because we have the open, the double height above the foyer and the double height above the family room, we're losing a lot of square footage on the second floor where it's not usable space.
So you're, I guess you're saying you can make it smaller, but the client just doesn't want it smaller.
There's always options.
There's always options. Yeah, yeah.
I think what we have is we have a difference of approximately 2% from what's there now as far as the variance. You know, so we're not really, 2% is not a huge number for roof size or size of your house compared to the one that's there. It's just that the one that's there was set up in a different way for a different time. And it is not really the kind of houses that are being built now. I mean, they're, it's a, it's an older house and it needs updating. And this is, his choice is either to move out of Sarvo or hang around and try to make a stream house here. It's not that huge a difference from the lot coverage that we already have with the existing house.
What, what is that lot coverage?
Square footage. What's, what, what kind of square footage are we talking about? That 5%, if you will.
It's around 480 square foot.
What's that?
It's around between 480 and 500 square foot.
So it's like a 20 by 20 room.
Twenty five by twenty, yeah, around there, yeah.
Twenty by, 22 by 22 room.
That's two stories. So that would just be the first floor. So that 500 square foot.
Oh, it's the footprint that's doing the coverage issue, right?
Yeah, but that 500 square foot footprint gives you almost 1,000 square foot more living space because it's two stories.
What's the existing percentage of the existing house?
Between 22 and 23%.
And this one is?
24.9, basically 25.
So it's from 23 to 24.9.
About two and a half percent more.
And you're putting in the water control then?
Correct.
Right, which should be a help to the neighbors actually.
A dry well like that? Yeah, it's, it's a, that's a typical design, especially for anything that's increasing impervious coverage. Yeah. No, it has nothing to do with the water usage in the house. It's all about the water, the rainwater, the storm water that comes down and hits the roof.
Right.
Yeah. So that's, that's what it's, what it's connected to.
This is like at the top of the hill too, this house.
Right. In the old days, you just have your gutters dump it out on the ground, but that doesn't work with these kind of houses. And it's much nicer to have it siphoned away into a spot that's safer and, and controls its flow into the sewer system, basically.
So in perspective, we're looking at a 220 square foot difference to what's there now, where you're looking to take.
About, yes.
260.
260.
Based on the numbers on the plan.
Yeah. Because I noticed that the design of the home has gone to the extremes on everything. Side setbacks, you know, 10 foot, height 35 foot. It, it seems like this type of home, it could be smaller and still be beautiful. Like you have it here. And I think it's not within the character of the surrounding community.
I think Paul made a point before that, you know, I come from a town that has small houses too. But every so often I knock one down and build a big one, the biggest one you possibly can. And every single one is a variance because not one would meet the side setbacks. I think we're in a transition period where, where people were more adapted to living in smaller spaces, you know, from the 60s to whatever, people lived with 250 square foot per person. Spaces are larger now and people are looking for houses with larger spaces. Mr. Patel is one of those people looking for that type of house. But you, you know, you can't find it right now and he likes Sarvo, he likes his neighborhood. So he wants to build a house of his dreams and he wants to, you know, plant his roots here in Sarvo. So I think it just comes down to the types of houses that people are looking for these days.
Yeah. Also, Mr. Patel can come back up. He's under oath still. He can tell you, he's personally spoken with everyone on the list of neighbors that had to be noticed. And everyone's very enthusiastic about it. So it's not like there's going to be people who are pitchforks telling you that they don't like the design and it's different than the rest of the community. They're all sort of in favor of it as far as I can tell. And he can come up and, but that's by that.
If he could, I appreciate that.
I, the central, the point of the house might, so I have a, this side is the nine to 10 neighbor. The front of my house is an 11 neighbor. So I went to them and I said to him like, I'm building the new house. So everyone is saying, oh, very good, Mr. Patel, good luck. They're exciting. They say, oh, very good. If you build something new, our house price goes up too. I said, we are happy to. And they, they say, they send us some, one mail. And they already signed the paper for me, all neighborhood, like around 20, 22 people. They say anytime you need a help, we are always with you.
They signed what?
The.
Service.
Service.
Yeah.
It was a service list and he also spoke to about it, showed the pictures of what it was going to be at the time that he spoke with them about it. And it's your testimony that in fact, people were not against it.
No, no, everyone says, I'm so happy to you build it because I'm living 2006 there. My street is almost, my neighborhood is a little bit senior citizen. So I always watch it out for them like snow and anything. I clean it out and I helping out, they help us. They watch my kids is when they're playing outside. So we are like family, like 16 year. I don't like to feel to move anywhere because I, my kids born over there.
You live there now?
Yeah.
How long, and you've lived there 16 years?
16 years.
In that house?
Just same house.
Okay.
Did your neighbors see the size of the house?
Show the pictures.
The quality of spheres of it. They seen what the actual design?
Yeah, I saw the picture. I saw, yeah, I saw the picture and they said, oh my God, it's a beautiful house.
Paul, can you hold up and show us what the pictures he showed him?
He showed them basically the kit you guys got. We saw that only smaller. He showed them the, you know, basically the whole set you've got on your table with you and that is showing up here.
And the, and the same set that was presented by the architect.
Yeah, same. We never.
But you saw the neighbors saw.
Right.
They never signed some paper too, I think.
Yeah, you gave it to me and I've managed to lose it on your end.
I think he put a single copy.
And that's not the formal one. That's just one that he went around with by himself.
No. Yeah, we, if we mark that, we got to keep it. So I don't want to.
Yeah, I just wanted to show it to you. He's not making it up. He's, he's a pretty popular neighbor.
No, well, I, I think those were important points. I didn't know that he lived there 16 years. I thought he just bought the land and he's building a house.
No, because then, then you'd be thinking that he's just building it to flip it and get out, right?
But he's not. You don't flip a house like this, I don't think. There's not, I don't.
You were just waiting.
Yeah, this ain't a flip your house.
No, I think this is, this is where he wants to live. I know from personal experience, I just, you know, built my dream house. It was not for good reasons, but I did. And it's really something. Everybody likes the way it turned out. And I think people are going to like it.
And now his kids, when he's 18, they want a separate bedroom. Right now, my daughter sleep with my, my mother-in-law, my son sleep with my grandpa, my father-in-law, sorry. So now they are growing. So they say, oh, I need a separate room, I need separate closet. And I look for a house in the, the kids don't want to move. My wife don't want to move anywhere. So that's the reason we come out this plan.
Okay.
And just, sorry, just to clarify that the list that he showed us, there was a photocopy in the file Joan has of all the neighbors signing off on you.
Okay. Oh, if I could ask you a question, how tall is your home?
You know, I'd have to call my architect up. I haven't sworn in. I was told there'd be no math.
I just tried, I just tried.
It's one of a lawyer, not an accountant, right?
I was trying to get a relationship possibly to what, how tall this might be.
Pretty tall. I mean, it is, I mean, not as tall as the one that burnt down. I mean, that was three stories Victorian, you know, the big peak roof. Every room was 10 feet, you know, so it's not as tall as it was.
Any other questions from the membership here?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, six bedrooms. Does that require more parking spaces?
We have the architect. Can you answer? How many parking spaces are on site? Including the garage and the driveway?
Yes. I'd have to dig in a little bit deeper, but for sure, four cars, possibly five.
The garage holds how many?
Two.
Two.
Residential site standards dictate the number of parking spaces for five bedroom, which is outside of table, which means three. So he's got four six bedrooms. He's going to exceed the state.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
True question.
Any other, any other questions from the membership?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just to go over it, we asked this of everybody more or less. There's only one kitchen? Yes, one kitchen. And there's no separate entrances, like where the house can be divided into?
No, there's a front entrance and there's a back.
Right.
No, there's one into the garage as well.
But they're, they communicate with all the rooms?
This is not meant to be divided into two families.
Okay, and it won't be a two-family house that's on the record?
No, it will not be a two-family house.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have every, both.
I'll go ahead.
We're shooting for probably end of spring 2023? Maybe beginning of spring 2023? I'd say six months to a year.
You have a question?
Yeah, I have two questions. Is, there's, there's a good bit of, is there any accessible attic space proposed?
Oh, we're going to have a pull-down ladder, but it's not going to be a livable space. It'll be storage.
So not a regular staircase, just a pull-down?
No, yeah, correct.
And then, you know, this is partially a comment more so than a question, but you know, there, there's a beautiful outdoor patio area proposed. I see a television fireplace and such based on the orientation of the lot. It looks like that'll probably catch the afternoon sun. You know, shading for that is probably something that's desirable. Any additional roof structures out there would probably exacerbate our building coverage issues. So I'm not sure what's planned for the future. So there may or may not be a question in there, but it's a comment at least.
Yeah, I think we've tipped the lot for coverage. So there's no roof in the future. I think it's patio umbrellas is the plan.
Hey, do you have any questions?
Just one other comment, Mr. Chairman. All right. So, and this has nothing to do with whether they want to do it or not. It's more a legal issue. We have a perfectly good house existing that is planned to be torn down. Is that, there's no problem with that?
No, there's not. Okay. It's, that's certainly allowable. It's just your own property. You can, you can tear it down and build a new house anytime.
Okay, all right, no.
I'd like to open up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wish to come in on this application? I see no.
Other portion.
Okay, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, members, I guess, what's your, oh. I opened it up. Yeah.
Who are you? I was looking at the property on my phone. My apologies.
Mr. Chairman. Paul, did you want to summarize it all or?
I think you've heard it. It's basically, it's a big house, but it's a nice house and it's what they need for their family size. And I think his expectation is that there, you know, the family's going to grow within the four walls of this house. And if the neighbors are okay with it, then I'm okay with it.
I think. Members, what's your desire for this home or the application?
Move it be approved as, as given.
Is there a second?
Second.
Don, roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. President State?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Can't wait to see you. You can stay in Sarvo. Bye-bye. Cell tower, dish wireless 2208?
Yeah, it was a little, when we got here, now let's get.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name's Christopher Quinn with the firm Pinellas Halperd here on behalf of the Alpkin Dish Wireless Peace, Dish Wireless LLC. Dish, the newly FCC licensed wireless communications carrier to this marketplace. They've been launching their network to other regions throughout the entire country and are currently trying to build out the tri-state New York, New Jersey, Connecticut area right now. Its system is functionally equivalent to all the other carriers you've heard before. AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, Verizon, just pretty much just another carrier that's going to the marketplace. And they are licensed by the FCC to provide the service. The property in question, it's lot 333.01 lot 72 Gowan Street. It's located in the B3 zone. This property has an auto body shop in the front and a lattice tower in the rear of the property. I guess rear to the. What Dish is proposing to do is to co-locate antennas on this tower. What that means is it will add three antennas near the top of the tower. It will replace an existing empty mount that used to be occupied by another carrier, but isn't being fully utilized. The top of Dish's antennas will be about 161 feet. The top of the existing structure with the beacon is 169 feet, five inches. So it won't increase in height at all. Related equipment cabinets. Dish has a small footprint for its equipment. It uses cabinets inside and it will be located in the basement, the fencing compound that's there. Cabinets are smaller than what you may have seen from some of the other carriers. I know 20 years ago, when you see this, a lot of carriers would propose like a 12-foot by like 22-foot or sometimes even 30-foot kind of buildings. Dish is able to do it. I think the technology for the ground cabinets are getting smaller where they can actually do it and consolidate. So they're using a much smaller footprint.
Do you have big wisdom footprint?
It's 35 square feet on a platform of 35 square feet. So even AT&amp;T, I represent AT&amp;T, you know, it was here last year for an AT&amp;T application. And they, their new shelter is only 70 by 70. So even there, going down to 49. Anyway, under your ordinance, we technically require use variance and site plan approval for this kind of project. You've heard this, I'm sure, these carriers a number of times that mentioned I was here. Not physically here, happy to be here tonight. A year ago, when I was seeing everything on the on their computers for another application somewhat of this, but as you heard before, there's two different ways this application, the use rates can be approved. First of all, under the federal laws that came out about 2012, the middle-class tax 649 of Federal Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, 47 USC 1455, adding antennas to a tower where there's not substantial changes to it, has to be approved by a little jurisdiction. But in terms of just traditional use variance relief, I mean, this is one of those applications where you see it and you're like, yeah. Positive criteria, there's no surface in the area. Dish is rolling out their network right now. FCC license is proof that courts have said that the use promotes a general welfare to the community. Particular suitability for the rest of the positive criteria prong, it's existing tower. Boards have approved this tower a number of times in the past, deemed inappropriate for the use. Designed it, made it to actually accommodate this type of co-location for this type of use. So I submit that it's particularly suitable. In terms of negative minimal, you know, there's very little difference. It's designed for this. We're putting antennas on a tower that was designed to support antennas. Don't think there's gonna be, it's again, it's passive use. We've heard this a right number of times. There's no light, heat, dust, emissions, any, you know, any kind of glare, anything like that. There's no deviation from any of the previous approvals. It's just a new carrier. Anyway, in terms of witnesses, I have our engineer Peter Smith here tonight testify. He'll run through this for you. And again, he's prepared the plans and Smith's part of this application. But I think I gave you a lot of information. Hopefully, this that was the hard part. But I'll call Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, just before, just to reiterate with the applicants attorney said, so actually, we just addressed two scenarios. One is before the recent set of federal laws regarding cell towers. Before that, they would be making the argument, this this property's been approved for cell locations. There's a lattice tower there. If you look at the original approvals, it was built that size and that heavy duty to have multiple carriers. So we don't have towers all over the place. So under the old law, they have a real good argument to say, give us the variance because we're not going any higher. We're on the tower that's already there, and it was the whole purpose. You guys approving it. So then the the federal laws have come out. There's been a few iterations, as as Chris indicated, that they're trying to make this easier because again, we're all using, you know. It's on your it's on your watch now, right? We're Dick Tracy land. And and they want this this technology to roll out simpler. So believe it or not, there's very few of these coming along. As you may recall, those who've been on the board for a while, we used to hear these like every two months, there's a cell tower going up, right? Because of these laws and co-locating, the laws really say unless there's a use variance in play, they just pull permits and they go. Here, technically, because of the height of the antennas is why they're here tonight. So if it wasn't for that, let's say they were just swapping out antennas, they would have gotten building permits, not even bigger. So I'm not saying that to tell the board you have to vote yes, but it's just it's a very narrow reason why they're here this evening. The engineer will put on all the the legal detail, legal things we need to have on the record, and they need to have on the record as well. But it's like, just want to let you know that the law has changed for those reasons, and that's why you're not seeing these as well. Yeah, so I didn't want to just wanted to give you a quick digest so you can keep it in context while the engineer, no offense, drones on, putting all the important things on the record. So why don't I swear you in, sir? You swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could give us your names, but your last name for the record.
Peter Smith, S M I T H.
That was a tough one. And you want to qualify him, please?
Sure, Mr. Smith, by whom are you employed?
I'm employed by B and T Group.
If you give your business address, please.
Business address is 1717 South Boulder Avenue in Tulsa, Oklahoma.
And can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background, including any licenses you call?
Yeah, I I hold about 20 professional engineering licenses currently, including New Jersey, which is in good standing. I've been an engineer about 27 years and a P E professional engineer about 24 years, 23 years.
Except you're.
Thank you.
And I mentioned before, the Alpkin is an FCC licensed character, correct?
Yes, yes.
You're you've prepared plans for that for other projects in this region as well as throughout the country?
That's right.
So the process rolling out the network here.
Yes.
And obviously, in terms of designing, how you how many of these sites have you designed and prepared plans for for this?
For all carriers, we do about 12,000 sites a year nationwide.
So in terms of this particular site, by installing this tower, the Alpkin's not required to build another tower.
Correct.
So. Okay, we have a set of site plans that are provided to the board. It's mounted, so it's the exact one, not even colorized. So we will, I don't think we need to mark it.
No, that's fine. You don't need to mark.
What I'll ask you to do is go to sheet SP1, and you just describe what I'll do is to make it kind of easy is we'll talk about the overall site. They're talking about the compound, and then what it dishes proposing to. What you'll see is it's actually very small compared to everything itself. So with that, I'll let you describe the overall site.
Okay, here's the overall overall site. Gowan Street's here, dying into Raritan here. It's all kind of monochrome, so it might be a little hard to see. And our compound site, along with the towers back here behind this kind of auto body shop here. Existing chain link fence, the tower here in the middle, the triangles, the tower, self-supporter tower, and then the carrier compound ground furniture is around it here. The access is on Gowan Street, right behind the auto body shop.
Okay, can you now go, I guess, a little easier, A1, sheet A1, and we'll talk about the compound. What's there? Do you have the carriers?
Okay, so sheet A1 is a it's kind of a blow up of the compound here. You can see the shelters for the other carriers. You can also see inside the dash line here, the the kind of tiny dish proposed ground furniture here. The benefit Dish has is coming into these with brand-new technology, right? Minimized, miniaturized compared to what some of the carriers had to support 5, 10, 20 years ago. So it's a tiny fraction. It's a platform, 35 square foot, as Chris said, and it has a telco cabinet on it along with a little power cabinet and a fiber cabinet.
Sure, and that's blowing up a little bit to the detail to the right.
Here's telco here, the bigger cabinet and power and fiber. There's a nice bridge here where the cables go from the platform over to the tower and then up the tower.
Okay, now, can you go to sheet A2 and just describe your antenna aspect that just opposing here? Actually, I'm sorry, let me talk about two things before, because I think they were brought up one of those. So in terms of access right now, we're using the exact same access as what's been done before.
Yes, here's the gate here.
With no dedicated parking, it's just a technician. It's not curved and paved parking space. It's gravel.
It's just a gravel area. Yeah.
That was what was approved previously. That's what we utilize.
Yes, yes.
We don't need any further technician parking than what's there now.
No.
Technician same as before, one technician about once a month.
Yeah, exactly the same kind of visitation for technicians as any carrier has and always has.
And in terms of landscaping, there's no landscaping currently around this particular compound, correct?
No, none.
There's some buffering, I think, to the north of the along the property lines. That's all that's there. We're not.
Yeah, it's really this wedge between these two commercial properties. I mean, it's just a gravel lot in between the two.
Okay, now let's go to A2.
Okay, so on this sheet, you can see the elevation of the tower. The elevation's not changing. I mean, here's an existing light on top that comes in at 169, 169 foot 5 inches. Dish is going in here with a rad center at 158 feet even above ground level. You can see that antenna there to to allow for clearance for that installation. There's an existing empty antenna mount ring that's being removed. And then the other carriers are on this tower also. AT&amp;T has a couple of levels of of real estate. Sprint is still on here and also Verizon's here near the bottom.
Okay, and this described the size of the antennas being exposed, I guess, the detail to the right.
Yeah, this is a plan that shows the orientation of the antennas. Most of this is about measurements to attract the most the waves right from your phones. The antennas are all 72 by 20 inches, so 72 inches tall, six feet tall by 20 inches wide approximately. Standard width, it's going to be very similar to what's there. Some some antennas are taller actually than the dish package. They're only six foot.
So there's no changes that we're proposing right now to the existing conditions of the site, the size of it, actually installing dishes.
Yeah.
Equipment within the company.
Yes.
No new setback varies is done in both variances, correct?
Correct.
We only use various here because it uses and permitting zone. Colors, antennas, equipment, all to be consistent with what's there.
Yes.
The tower structure is sufficient to support the antennas?
Yes.
In terms of lighting, we're not posing any lighting or signage here?
No.
Not on the tower.
No.
No lights proposed to the equipment, but Dish will just bring a flashlight for you if a technician ever come in.
Yes, absolutely.
In terms of a generator, we're not posing a generator, we have battery backup only.
Correct.
There's a hookup for a generator, though, if there's ever emergency, someone could bring a temporary generator.
Yes.
I mentioned before, there's no changes or the the parking needs or the oftentimes the maintenance is are consistent with all the other care.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
So again, the this use has been previously deemed appropriate. This project, the scale of this project won't be done, will have any kind of negative impact on what makes this tower appropriate for this use, meaning it'll still be appropriate for this use with this installation.
Correct. It's used the way it was designed to be designed to be used.
Okay. And in terms of just the federal requirements, there's no increase in the tower height here?
None.
No increase to tower width?
None.
We're not adding more than four cabinets to the ground?
No.
Where cabinets aren't larger than what's there now?
No, they're not. They're all smaller.
Aside from utilities, there's no excavation being proposed anywhere around this tower outside the compound?
No, there's not.
We're not defeating any kind of concealment purpose. It's gonna look consistent with what's there now.
Yes, it will.
And we're not gonna do anything that's inconsistent with the prior approvals in terms of that would make this non-conforming for more streets.
No, we're not.
Okay. In terms of, I think we just all the comments in the reports, but I have no further questions for Mr. Smith. I hope I addressed everything. I think I tried to cover.
You may have testified this. I apologize. I didn't catch you. I was reading notes. The the height of the antenna, not the center line, because often it's a center line. It's 158 to the top edge of the antenna?
It's 158 to the center line of the antenna vertically. So the very tippy top of the antenna would be 161.
161, okay. And that's the height that the carrier needs for specific frequency that they operate under their FCC license.
It's the most advantageous height for the carrier, which for towns like yours helps propagate more signal further with fewer touches on towers.
It's also required for separation from the carrier below, correct?
Yes, that's correct. AT&amp;T, there has a couple of layers below currently under contract.
Yes, it's, can you describe which is correct?
161 is correct.
So that was the type of one of the plans. So it is gonna be 161.
Correct.
You'll submit revised plan showing the proper height as a condition of approval.
Yes, we could.
Thank you.
Their existing antennas where your antennas are going?
At one point in time, there was AT&amp;T had occupied two different heights. They still have lease rights to a certain height, and that's what's dictating where we go. But that mount had been, we've been told by the tower owner that that mount had been occupied by AT&amp;T one point in time that not occupying that height.
Wasn't any ground, wasn't a company that had something on the ground that is gone.
No.
Who's the actual owner of the tower? What are your responsibilities? What's yours?
It's company called Crown Test, and they are probably one of the most prominent power companies in the entire country.
Yeah, they bought AT&amp;T's portfolio of towers from them.
But 20, 15, 20 years ago.
What are their responsibilities and your responsibilities?
We're, Dish is a tenant of Crown.
Of your intent.
The tower, Dish maintains its own equipment.
Something that one of the struts on the tower was loose or broke.
It would typically be Crown. However, Crown is very, very diligent about maintaining the tower.
The fence, the fence or anything like that?
Typically, it's Crown or if anyone reaches up to the carriers, the carriers are there every month. All the carriers there, if there's an issue with the carriers, usually called Crown and tell Crown to.
Yeah. It's in their best interest to not have anybody extra in that site. I mean, my teams have to call and gain access to Crown's knock before we even go on site.
Happened to your ground holding.
Yes, yes. This is this is required to maintain its own equipment. And again, the typical technician visits, they do a visual inspection, make sure there's nothing that's concerned. There's a concern that doesn't involve their equipment, you know, picking up trash or something like that. They will call Crown.
Yeah, they report that to the tower owner.
I'm sorry if you covered this before. So the only reason that they're here is because it's a new section of the tower. So if there was other antennas over there, no one misses the spot, we would have to.
I think I get it. I think if it was, if it was AT&amp;T was already on this tower and had used strange people to be on this tower, I think they would go in and probably just get that building from it. It's because it's a new carrier that's being added to this facility, and that's just how your ordinance is written. Quite frankly, other towns, and it depends on how your ordinance is. And if you go, I was having conversations with someone about this earlier today, but if you go to New York, the state actually came down and said, this is not going to process these types of applications, and it's pretty much follow the one thing in form of New Jersey's decided, or rather, not decided, which means it's more town-to-town basis in terms of how you review the application.
Regardless, because you're doing new equipment on the tower, it's not like 15 people pull there and install.
Yes, yes. And it's just and it's just the mechanism you have, like, for for either way, the law is the law, but it's whatever procedure we have to go and get whatever approval you want to call it, it's Aerville Clause of the Use Variants. If you go to Springfield, it's a site plan waiver. If you go to another town, it's if when I was in South Annaboy, it was called a interpretation, or Prescott calls it an interpretation. So it's just whatever you call it here, it's pretty much the same thing. Installations are the same. The laws are the same. It's just how your ordinance defines it. We need to insert.
And Dish is boost. So your network for them is boost?
I I think they they have a relationship with boost.
Okay.
Now we're still done now when you guys put yours up?
I think there's still space for this tower.
Yeah, and there's multiple tenants. I mean, there's microwave dishes. I mean, different types of installations take up different space, radio frequency wise on the tower, require less, more or less spacing.
Yeah, I mean, again, different carriers occupy different, well, you find out it's different carriers, you don't really see different carriers have different like vertical spaces. So if you look at a shopping center, you're like, oh, that's space occupied by the tenant, and they're taking up this much space. Well, now in these towers, it's will act like this much space. And if we don't see it, they may have reserved that space for another carrier.
Any other testimony or? Any other questions from the board here? Open up to the public. There's any comments on this application? Is your motion to close?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. What's your pleasure on this application? Is your second?
Second.
Roll call, John.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you so much. Plans, and I think I did this before when I did it for AT&amp;T, because of timeline and everything, and just trying to roll out, I think the board and your zoning officer was very kind to work with us sometimes in terms of permits while waiting for the resolution. But obviously, we'll get the rise plans as soon as possible.
So you want authorization of all permits for the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so board members, everyone comfortable with? Okay, so board members, everyone comfortable with that? Because I always put that in the resolution just to memorialize.
Great.
Share the resolution. It was no, okay, thank you.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thanks.
If you're ordering one.
I wasn't going to, but if you want.
Yeah, would you just email to Jim? Sir, are you here in an application? Are you, are you here for an application with these folks? They got carried till next month. They'll be here July twenty seventh. Yeah, so, so we won't get a new notice. It'll be, it'll be heard next month, which is July twenty seventh.
It should be at seven thirty.
Seven thirty. No problem, sir.
What do we have now is memorialization of the resolutions?
Yes, Chairman, we have three resolutions. The first one is Joe Sakaraka from Two Tanhill Lane. That's was that large pole barn.
Right.
Pair the resolution with the, all the conditions we discussed to make sure it's not being used for business purposes. Things of that nature, unless there's any comments or revisions, we can.
Any comments? Have a motion.
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Yes, we do roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
And the next resolution we have is Men's Cell. It was on twenty six Eisenhower was bearings is for pool. Usual conditions were incorporated unless there's any questions we can memorialize.
Any questions at all? Make a motion?
Move to approve as written.
Is there a second?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
And the last one is Richard Burnett and Mark Inglis. What's your name? The seventeen Journey Mill. That was the extension of the, of the time to build the application. And all those conditions in the, I don't have, didn't print the up, the resolution. I can't remember the date, but the deadline to, to build and to demo is all in the resolution.
Any questions on that one?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Emma? Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Any questions on that? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all the resolutions. I believe Joan has minutes.
Yeah. Any questions on the minutes?
It'll be twenty fifth minutes.
Eight twenty fifth minutes. Any questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Your second? No. Okay. Everybody in favor? Say yes.
Aye.
All right. Any comments from the board at all? Let me ask you, anybody here, anything from the Temple of Law as to the status of that application? That's been approved like three years ago or so. Did we get a firm date on when that was approved at all?
I couldn't look it up. I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah, give or take. Yeah. Well, the same as that application we heard last month, they have two years to build the building or start using the variance. They have to request an extension of time like the two gentlemen did last that old bowling alley building. Well, yeah, I mean, the board, you know, we can always address it when we come, but speaking hypothetically, the board can always determine if it's been too long and time before they've asked for an extension, but really the losses don't stand on the, the procedural issues. Get to the substance, which is, you know, has like, as we discussed with that application last week, that old bowling alley has a neighborhood change. Is something changed that, that variance shouldn't be built now? And we wouldn't have granted it today if it was brand new application. It's kind of. I mean, I think he could always take the position, you know, twenty years is excessive period of time. They've kind of, you know, as losses, they slept on their rights. But you know, cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, right. They have no building permits yet, right?
Yeah, that's that same ordinance section applies. It says two years to either build it. You'd have to come back for an extension to that approval. Yeah.
Would they have kind of that approval day when the bridge was built?
They received it before, so I think it's part of the application they had that. And if they wanted to get the approval, I think it is not. How we have to acquire property, but they may have been having.
And you remember when that was, that here? All right, any other men, comments? Is there an adjournment motion?
Move to adjourn.
Your second? All favor say aye, aye. See you next month.